Um, yeah, so, uh, we'll go ahead and, uh, here, um, everyone have their report from Trilogy. And then we'll go to USW.
So, uh, there were several recommendations in our report and, uh, before I dig into those, I was reading our report, uh, again over the weekend. I found a couple of what I would call non-consequential as it relates to the recommendation errors in this report. Five should have been parentheses, a dash here. We're gonna reissue this report that, uh, considering there are no costs associated with that. None of the specifics were changed, other than, uh, what I call non-consequential. I can send you a red line markup if you wanna review that before we print it. Just so that you're clear that there are no specifics being changed. But we, uh, found some errors and we don't appreciate reports being out there circulated or called final or not. So if you guys are okay with us reissuing this report? Thank you. Um, so what we tried to do was in each section, make some specific recommendations to each one of the apartment complexes. Now, it's important to note that as the city engineer, what we try to do is to point, uh, the corrections in the direction by which they should be. So what you're gonna find is verbiage such as the design engineer of record for the site, improvement should be requested to review the findings themselves and make suggestions of the changes that needs to be made. It was, it's a little bit of a tedious situation when one engineer is reviewing another engineer's work and then we're making recommendations in terms of how to improve that. We always wanna get that original engineering opportunity to have his thoughts on how he thinks those, these potential errors should be addressed. And what that also do is pull the engineer to the table on Panther Hill by which we still never got the civil drawings for. So they need to come to the table and talk to this body about the concerns we found and what they might think would be good corrections. Now, we will be there to support the city in terms of whether we agree with those changes.
You're saying engineer from the...
Developer side.
Okay, not our past, okay.
Correct, yeah, but the, so, the, the errors that we pointed out are errors by which the developer's engineer, I don't wanna call them errors, the concerns that we found were concerns that developed from the work of the developer's engineer, not from the review of the engineer representative, representing the city.
Okay, now, can, can you help those of us who don't follow that? Because isn't our engineer, like in this instance, is you? Uh, had you been the city's engineer at that time? Are these things that, in that capacity, should have been caught with plan review or something? I mean, otherwise, why are we having all these folks submit these plans and having them checked and being paid?
That's correct.
They're not, 'cause when you say the developer's engineer, of course, they're bringing it forward.
Correct.
But they're bringing it forward to the city and hence our engineers. So would our engineers not have some culpability in this?
Uh, and maybe the lawyer could speak to this best, but, uh, if a developer's engineer made a mistake, be it caught by the reviewer or not, does not alleviate all liability of the engineer that did the work.
Okay, so would we be able to go after that engineer's bond or something?
I, I would, I would, I would defer
Okay.
whatever legal action you might take to the lawyer, but
Gotcha.
but you, 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 you always have to honor to your work, irregardless of how many times it's been reviewed.
Right.
Yes.
Now, what about the piece where our engineer reviewed at least two times those civil plans? So we know they were in possession of the city through the city's engineer, but haven't been able to bring those to you?
Yeah, I, I would again...
How's that work?
Um, so, me as, our, my firm is representing the city as the city engineer. We don't, without the backing of the city's legal authority, have the right to demand the drawings. We have requested them on multiple occasions. For that person to comply with our request, it's gonna take more than just that.
Uh, Councilor Griffin, um, do I recall that you had some contact on this civil plan issue with engineer Line Decker or?
I'm passing it out, passing out the email, uh, trying to...
Yeah, I'm trying it.
Okay, and what's the status from a, him having and turning over the civil plans that we gave to him on this matter?
He doesn't have the plans in his possession.
Say it again?
He doesn't have the plans in his possession. Can, can I read, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'll, I'll, uh, trying to, Griffin, I wanna read the email.
Okay, fine.
Um, so, uh, after our, our last meeting, there was a formal request, uh, the council asked, city, our engineer asked, uh, that we requested formally. We had been asking people, but we didn't send a document. The attorney sent the document to Mr. Line Decker, who used to be the city engineer. Um, asked, uh, that, uh, I have been asked to formally ask you to search your files and turn over any documents related to this project that you worked or have in your possession on behalf of the city of Prairie View, including any plans, plan reviews, correspondence, notes, work, roles as the city engineer. And she, uh, sent, gave that information. His response, Ms. Griffin, I have checked our files and I did not find any plans for Panther Hill Apartments. As I recall, we recycle all these plans, uh, to Prairie View's plans after Clay Line Decker resigned as the city engineer. As we discussed, I did not approve the civil drawings for Panther Hill Apartments because of the issues in my review that I have forwarded to you. And that response is also in Mr., um, in the Trilogy Engineering's plan in the back of there, that's the, the email or the letter from May eighth, twenty eighteen.
Okay, and it refers to the email on the issues?
Yes, the May, the May eighth, the, what's in back here.
Okay.
Um, there was a, it's a document that came from, uh, their group, the, 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 to Line Decker, to the developer of Panther Hill, that outlined the same thing that's in Trilogy's report, in reference to the draining, in reference to the sewer line, reference to everything we've been talking about. And, and, and the backfield that the back, what is it? The backflow that we're gonna get fixed this week, that was mentioned from May eighth, twenty eighteen.
Okay, Mr. Line Decker sent this to the developer, but he didn't send it to the city.
No, the email that he forwarded, I believe...
Yeah.
This is the name of the...
Yeah, yeah, the mayor received the copy.
Which one on this?
Yes. And so, we're just trying to simply, so the city, so the, the engineer who was working in that capacity for the city said he didn't approve the plans. We have a current engineer, and this has been eighteen months in process. Our current engineer is just trying to get a copy of the plans. There are two ways to, two, two ways to do this. We've requested verbally, the city engineer, the, I think the mayor, I don't know if the mayor, you said you did, uh, or you asked Ms. Cortez to do it.
Yes, I opened the email where they responded back and did the link and David opened it, Ms. Cortez opened it, and I opened it, I moved on.
And the link didn't work.
Well, it did initially, but there was a problem with it later, but initially it did.
Yeah, we were not able to get the link to it.
So the link didn't work, then it, then it, then it worked later on, or were you never, never able to?
We were not able to get the link to open.
Okay, so, so, that, that happened, then we waited another two weeks to have the meeting to just say, hey, all we want is the drawings. Now, the, the issue is, it's one thing if this project was over. This project still had, uh, is getting certificate of the, of occupancies and building per, or permits to continue to move forth in their process. There's, 'cause it's done in phases. So it's not like that the person who's built this project has left and moved on to another project. They're still having interactions with the city. And so I'm trying to figure out why is it so hard to now just saying, hey, like, if it's a, if the cost is the issue, we've already approved the cost to buy the plans. Why we haven't got that, which brings us back here now. After we get the recommendations from Mr. Underwood, um, or from Trilogy, from USW, beer, and we got some information from Bureau Veritas, we have to look at the, to the documents that I gave you to, on how do we move forward from here? In the documents that I, that, that was provided, uh, for Article ten, there's some sections in there and I wanna go through, through those to figure out how do we resolve this issue. Right now, though, I don't necessarily wanna get to that resolution. I mean, we need to hear from the experts, our engineer and our public works, to make sure that we're clear on what we're hearing. We just heard, have been provided in, in doc, written documentation that the city engineer at that time said he did not approve this project. He gave recommendations back to the developer that still are not fixed and not in compliance. And so, that's something that we need to pause because everyone said that that wasn't true last time we talked. And so now that, now that we got the documentation that proves that that was not the case, now we can move forward with now the other recommendations in reference to why our current city engineer, some of the things he's, they, some of the recommendations were recommendations that were already from the beginning. And so we can't, they have not seen the civil plans to give us the deeper dive, but, but based upon the other recommendations, those are things that we can address. And all we're trying to simply do is address the problems and move forward. And so if you could finish, um, um, from the report so we can get to all the other things that we need to get to. To try to, to one, try to get recommend, uh, to try to move forth the process, but then also, we still, the main issues, we still need to get the civil engineering plans and we'll talk about that at the, uh, after you're done.
So specifically to Panther Hill, I think you hit the nail on the head. I mean, the question, we were not able to complete our review, nor have substantial recommendations because we haven't seen the plan. So the question for this body is what action can they take to ensure that we get the plans up? And, uh, hopefully, hopefully there's an answer for that.
Mr. Underwood, uh, uh, when you're done?
No, go ahead.
Um, do you, have you determined, or have Trilogy, as our city engineer, have you determined that there has been non-compliance with any material terms, conditions, or requirements of the ordinances?
So, we have not been able to confirm whether the things outlined in the letter that you presented from the previous engineer, whether those things have been corrected or not. We've not been able to determine whether those things have been corrected or not.
Attorney Griffin?
Yes?
Did you, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay.
So were the, were those items in that previous letter?
Yeah, those are the ones I'm referring to.
Conditions or requirements of the ordinance?
She's asking.
Yes, the previous letter had three different numbered items by which the previous engineer had concerns with. And we have not been able to confirm whether those concerns have been addressed.
Can we start with those concerns, so we know what we're talking about?
So he says, uh, water system. It appears that the entire apartment complex is served by one six-inch water main. Any connections to the city water, to the water system must be metered and have a vacuum, vacuum breaker and or a double check valve on it. I did not see any internal fire hydrants on the plans. These are all in the, just the water system itself, so there are multiple issues within that, I, I'll just keep reading. This will be reviewed by the fire marshal, but I recommend each corner of the building uh, be a maximum of four hundred feet from the hu, fire hydrant. That way the fire hi, fire hose can be laid, not, not a straight line. If internal fire hydrants are required for water main size, we need to at least have eight-inch mains and meter on it.
That's a if.
Yeah, yeah.
That's not a direct...
So we've not been able to confirm whether that's the case or not. But, uh, I, I think the biggest issue here in that one is that the whole complex is served by one six-inch water main.
Okay.
And the question is, is it adequate or not, including fire suppression and all the other things that go along with that one line?
Okay, but the fire suppression would come from the fire marshal as...
That's correct.
...referenced here.
And he said...
So if we've got Bureau Veritas, I forgot the gentleman's name, who's their fireperson, who signed off on everything from water pressure and all that, does that not, does that not address that or not? Because he's referencing the fire marshal. What, what, what I'd like us to do, because you have that information and we do have ways of checking some of these things, let's check them so we know what we're talking about and going after them. Because to do anything deeper and to come up and say, this was done and we're talking about ordinance and revoking certificates of occupancy and, and all of those things, this is enforcement. We need to know what it is we're talking about enforcing. So if they haven't violated something, like he said it's served by a six-inch, does our ordinance say, and you have access to those, does our ordinance say it should be an eight, ten, twelve inch? Because we were there and we, we did the connection as a city.
Yeah, well, the, the ordinance is not gonna specify a specific size line. The size of the line is gonna be tied to the number of occupancies on the property. So, um, I, again, we don't... The final drawings for these buildings should have all the corrections on it and whatnot. So if we had the final drawings, then we wouldn't even, we could, we could verify and confirm all of these things.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, also another thing, uh, we go back to Bureau Veritas' report, which we see how inaccurate that was, so how do we, Mr. Mayor, how could you possibly, uh, state that we should go back to a report when we find out, when we found out at our previous meeting that, uh, that the report was, uh, inaccurate and it wasn't up to date, well, as you stated, it wasn't up to date or was, we still were receiving buildings, uh, said gas. Ms. Rogers said there's no gas on there, so how do we know that? You could rely just based off of putting that report to that decision?
Well, what, what they're referring to is not something that we found to be inaccurate. The fire, uh, pressure was checked by multiple people. The state fire marshal came to this facility at least three times that I'm aware of, including, uh, assistant fire chief of the city of Prairie View's volunteer fire department, uh, Bedron Bordeaux, who's extremely licensed and certifies folks to be fire marshals. So there was multiple checks on, on this in addition to, as you say, Bureau Veritas. But that's the type of thing that was used back at the time when certificates of occupancy were issued because we were getting that information from multiple people, including state fire marshals who came to, is it safe? And they found no problem. So, I mean, these things we're checking, but when you ask to that, it's all those multiple experts in that area that, uh, that we relied on.
Yes, sir. I, I just wanna bring us back to, to the report and to our engineer who's the expert. We wanna hear from him and then we wanna ask questions because again, we don't wanna just start defending it, things we may or may not know or things that we, we're... So, so I would look, if we have a question, he, he's here to help us answer the question. If you look at the overview on their report, they outlined some things that, based upon their expertise, that they have identified. Whether it be the stormwater detention calculations, they have to do with drainage, the same drainage and detention system that's listed on the May eighth, twenty eighteen, report that the engineer had. Some of the same things in reference to this six-inch line sanitary number two. So it's not a, it's not a, we're looking, so this was, should have been checked when you received this, May eighth, twenty eighteen. And subsequently, when we have brought to your attention these things, things about the development that you could have said, hey, you know what, let me just step back and verify these to be done. I don't know if that was done, I can't make that, that comment. All I'm simply saying is that our current engineer, who's standing right here, in his report, have outlined some things that he's, that they've saw right now that needs to be, that he's gonna give us additional recommendations on where we're at. But before we even start talking about where he's at, we've set the stage that you've been saying that David Line Decker approved the civil engineering plans and stamped them.
That's not what I said. That is not what I said.
You, you said David Line Decker.
I said David Line Decker as the city engineer that you involved in hiring.
Yes, sir.
When I came in, our process, we followed the same ones that's been here since you started years ago.
Yes, sir.
We sent it to Mr. Line Decker. Mr. Underwood's documents from Mr. Line Decker confirmed that he had a re-review, which means not only that he had the plans, but he reviewed them at least two times in writing that we know of. Now, one of the questions that I've got, and Counselor, this may be you, because on one hand we're saying we need the plans that were submitted, on the other hand, I'm hearing, and notice Mr. Line Decker's words, I don't recall approving the plans. He didn't say he didn't approve them, he's confirming he had them.
No, he didn't say that.
He said he didn't...
He recall having the plans. He says, he says, as we discussed, I did not approve the, the civil drawings for Panther Hill because of the issues in his review. The, the recall piece is a whole nother sentence that has nothing to do with that. And so we just wanna be very clear.
Right, but he says, as I recall, we recycle all of these Prairie View plans after they resign.
Right, and then the next...
That, that didn't, no, no, stop.
Yes.
That didn't happen. Mr. Line Decker did not bring these things, I was here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so he, he resigned.
He said recycle doesn't mean they...
He didn't bring it back.
He said recycle means they got ripped, they...
No, 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 no.
He said return, he said recycle.
Yes, we recycle all these Prairie View plans. Oh, if, okay, so he's saying...
Let me see that with him.
Okay, so you're right, he's saying he destroyed the plans.
Right, but again, let's, let's, I'm trying to keep us on track. We're not saying, you're, we're not, we don't care if Mr. Line Decker has the plans at his house. We're saying that Mr. Line Decker says, in this statement, let me read it again. I did not approve the civil drawings for Panther Hill Apartments because of the issues in the review that is on May eighth, twenty eighteen that you have. He said he didn't approve it. Now, we're saying that our current engineer wants a copy of the plan and you, being the mayor, could get a copy tomorrow.
How?
We've already approved the, uh, amount to purchase the civil...
Tell me where to get them from.
From the, 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 the developer, who you have constant contact with regularly. They currently have pro, so, so this is what I'm saying. Panther Hill is not done. They are in the office every other week or how, however often because they have current projects that they're being approved. And so, and so we can look for the documents that have your signatures in the, in the month of November for their developments, which tells you you had some interaction. And so I'm saying that because you've had that interaction with somebody from the firm...
Which documents?
The, the ones that have, that has your name on it, that has, that have, when you approved the certificate of occupancy.
In November?
Yeah. Mm-hmm, we, we got that at the last meeting, remember the certificates? We had the temporary, that was only a year, and then you came back in November and signed some permanent ones. And it's, and it wasn't just at one time, it was over a period of time where you signed permanent COs. And the only point I'm trying to make is that you had some interaction with an agent from this developer. That's all I'm saying. And so I just wish we could just, I just wanna move forward, but we just gotta, like, let's just accept that you did. And you can simply ask them to say, hey, we need you to divi, to get us the plans here in the next three days. What's the cost, get it here. And this can alleviate a lot of this, but we just wanna keep it straight because we keep getting taken off in this, in this path.
Let me, let me, let me respond to you. You received a copy of their letter accusing you and a couple of others of discrimination.
Yes, I have it.
So you personally can take some credit for ruining the relationship. Yeah, no, no.
'Cause I can read the, I have, I have the copy of what the, what the attorney's...
I didn't interrupt you.
You're right, yes, sir.
Okay?
Go ahead.
So, on one hand, you say, we got a relationship, we can go get something from someone. On the other, your attitude, this is like the twentieth or twenty-first time in nineteen months that you had this one issue on here, and to date, to date, even with the recommendations that Mr. Underwood shared with you, we have not confirmed they've broken one ordinance or anything.
We have.
No, you haven't.
You're getting it fixed the next two days.
That's not, but do you know where it's at? It's in the city easement.
That's not what the report says, and we're gonna get to that, we're gonna get to USW. We're gonna get to USW.
Is it in the city easement? No, no, I didn't, let me ask...
We're on Trilogy, son.
Are we in, is it in the city easement?
That has nothing to do with who pays for it. 'Cause we have documents where you were notified in June of twenty, uh, in June, when the developer both was notified that they needed to pay for this and they needed to make sure it happened. That's, there's documents that says that, that you knew and the developer knew. So this is not new, so I just, I want us to just, again, we're on the same team. Can we just go to Trilogy, then go to USW? We go, we wanna walk, slow walk this through so we can come to some resolution and get it done. 'Cause this week we're getting the backflow done, but that should have been done when they first did it, but we, no matter what, we're getting it done. But that was something that was identified in a report several months ago.
And we could decide, did we, as the city, because we were involved in the connections on this project. You were not there one day. So what you speak to means absolutely nothing because you...
That's why I'm trying to hear from an expert.
But he wasn't here either, okay? So when you start talking about what needed to be done and who did it, we did the connection. Based on what we did and what I inherited from people like you, we were doing it with unlicensed people in the first place. So you wanna bring all this out, you better make sure we're clean first. Because our people did not have the requisite water sewer license to make the connections that you had them doing for years. So while you're bringing this stuff out about what somebody else did, make sure you look in the mirror because we are not without culpability.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mr. Underwood.
I, I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so I mean, the, the problem's still a lot, they still haven't got the civil plans yet. So one of the, one avenues was to go to Mr. Line Decker to get it. And his email, he's saying he doesn't have it. So Councilman Roland was saying, can you just go to the developer and ask them, can we get the civil plans? And even if the letter of discrimination has Councilman Roland, Jones, and my name, it doesn't have your name on it. But he's like, as the mayor of the city of Prairie View, he's like, can you ask, gonna be after the city to get those?
You have created a bad relationship with the city, not with me.
Dr. Peter Brown?
Yes, I've asked, no, it's, it's not about Dr. Brown. It's about the city wanting these plans and you put people in a time where they don't even wanna communicate with us. Yes, sir, go ahead.
So the reality is, we don't have to ask, we're not, we're not, we're not in a position where we have to ask and beg. As the city, we can go and demand that we, that they submit those plans, right? Because at the end of the day, they need us to give them certificates of occupancy, give them company. And so if we really want the plans, we don't have to ask them for plans. Like, asking, that's the polite way around it. The lawsuit, if there's a lawsuit, I don't know, I don't even know about the lawsuit, my name, I mentioned it. We don't have to ask them for, we don't have to ask them to be polite at this point for... And the, the point is, they don't have, doesn't have to be a, a great relationship for us to get these plans. If we really want the plans, we should be able to go over there and say, hey, the city needs these plans, you have three days to supply these plans or there is a consequence.
What if they violate? Counsel, can you share with us? Because, uh, we've been told by at least three, uh, including your firm, that this is a private development. So you need to guide us on what we can and can't do, based on what they have or haven't done that we can prove.
That per email.
Right, so that's why we're trying to, uh, get Mr. Underwood to go through the specific items which he's claiming whether or not they're, uh, non-compliant with the material term condition or requirement of the ordinance. Since he's been through them, and he's still on number one
Yes.
of the three that he stated there were.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Underwood.
So if, if one of your experts determines and states to you on the record that there is a non-compliance with a material term condition or requirement of the ordinance, and if you as zoning officer choose not to do something, then council can take action on their own. You have the option to jump in ahead of that and just ask for it. But if you don't, that's one of the experts states that there is a material non-compliance, then city council can jump in and do a season of this. And I think that's what they're looking to do at this point, but I think they need to hear from the experts.
'Cause you can do it.
Well, I, I haven't heard a definitive. I've heard, we need to check this, there's a reference to this, there's a if. Then in the definitive, a little bit more than that? If you need the plans to prove.
That's why we're asking them, they're still on number one, they were going to interact. He did say, he thought there were three material conditions, he started with number one and was going to go on to two and three that were from the original Line Decker, uh, letter that, I found it what they agreed with, but I don't think he thought that part actually stated that. That's what I thought is the initial concern.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so let me just be clear, in our report, we did take the time to point out the things that we thought were done right, as well as the things we had concerns with. And the issue with Panther Hill, this is a little bit of a do loop. If you're looking for us to say they violated something, when we can't even see the drawings to say whether they violated something, that's a little bit of a do loop, with the exception of, we have a letter that says, these are three legitimate concerns that have been documented. Now, uh, I don't know if that's enough from a legal perspective to say, we need, we need the drawings to confirm this accusation. So, so Line Decker is saying, these three things are concerned, and he had looked at the drawings. So this is your strongest evidence of a potential non-compliance, this letter.
And so we're asking your firm, who's the city's engineer, who looked at, whatever you've looked at, whatever you've had, whatever information, does the city determine that there has been non-compliance with any material terms, conditions, or requirements of the ordinance in anything that you have outlined in your recommendations or from the letter from Mr. Line Decker?
And I'll just read the first sentence in our, um, summary. Undetermined since construction drawings to review did not contain any civil or site drawings.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, I see that you throw your hands up. May, may I ask why? Because where he said is that we don't have the drawings, so we need you to get the drawings.
Yeah, if you hadn't done, council's the reason why we can't get them.
Mr. Mayor, stop.
No, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. You don't tell me what to do.
So because you're not interrupting me as I speak.
You, you, you asked the question.
Can I finish my point?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, you, you, you throw your hands up as if like it's nothing that you could do. You are the mayor of this city, you, you moved this city forward, you, you moved the agenda forward, or the planet to fail, or the plan to succeed. And he's saying that we need the drawings to be able to move forward, which you have a, a, a relationship still with the developers, he just doesn't have a relationship with the outfits that's in the city council, but he has a relationship with you. I'm trying to, uh, to be a helping hand, to reach out to them, to talk about different things. I wasn't afforded the opportunity to do the several different things, I don't know why, but you still have that relationship, Mr. Mayor.
How do you know what relationship I've got?
Mr. Mayor.
Just stop speaking the stuff you don't know, that's not a fact.
Mr. Mayor, he, he is a business within your city, and you tell, and you can't go over to ask for the plans so that way we can move the city forward? You have students living in a housing in which, in which the engineer hasn't signed off on. And you throw your hands up as if you don't care?
Don't, don't be saying I don't care.
So, 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 go, go get the plans, Mr. Mayor.
You go get, you met with the man for a couple of hours, why didn't you get?